Conduct of Business, Item E.
So, I'll do a quick introduction.
Wait a minute, let the city clerk...
Oh.
It's all right. I know you're ready.
Receive presentation in Cable Enterprise Business Plan.
Go. So, what we'll do is we'll hear from the city manager first, then the director. And what we'd like to do with the director is allow him to make his presentation through the plan and then hold our questions to the end. City manager.
Sure. So, our cable director, Sandeep Krishnamurthy, will give the presentation tonight. But just a quick introductory comment. First, this is one more step in our assessment and process to develop the long-term future for the cable enterprise. And so, we had two sessions with council where we took an in-depth look at the cable enterprise, presented that information. The very last direction that we received to council was to go ahead and put together a business plan. We have done that. That is in your packet tonight. And what you will see is a large part of our future success hinges on the fiber-to-the-home project. We are not asking council to make a final decision on the fiber-to-the-home project. There are various financing methods for that. And should council accept the business plan, we will go back, finalize those financial plans, and then bring those to council. This is accepting... Tonight is a presentation and accepting of the business plan. The other thing I want to say is just a very public and heartfelt thank you to Sandeep and the team at the cable department. Sandeep started... I started on the Monday about eight months ago, and Sandeep started on that Wednesday. What Sandeep and the team has accomplished in eight months is nothing short of remarkable, not only in their understanding of the enterprise and the larger national network of the cable industry, but also a number of the immediate improvements that they have undertaken and completed, a number of them, to really put the cable enterprise in a better state. And you will hear a number of those tonight. But I just want to publicly thank Sandeep for his leadership and thank the team that really rallied around him, that really had a long or a deep knowledge in San Bruno and passed that information on to Sandeep. And I think we have the right person leading the department to take us into the future. So, with that, Sandeep.
Well, that set you up well, sir.
Thank you. Really appreciate those comments.
Thank you, city manager, for letting that be known accurate. And sir, the presentation is yours, and we will hold our questions to the end.
Okay. Honorable mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Sandeep Krishnamurthy, cable director of San Bruno Municipal Cable, and it is my pleasure this evening to present the Cable Enterprise Business Plan, which includes within it the Fiber Upgrade Plan. The objectives of my presentation are to provide you information on our path forward, the changes we have made to our business so far, new strategies and plans, as well as outcomes and timelines of these strategies and plans. So, we have a three-part agenda, the first being a recap in brief of what we covered in the Cable Enterprise Study Session in November, the second part being business strategies and plans, and lastly, the plan highlights. I had displayed this slide the last time around to give an indication of how San Bruno Cable stacks up against the national pay television market. And our penetrations are as follows. Nationally broadband, our internet service is at 53 percent, and we are at 44. On television, we have a 38 percent penetration against a national level of 41. And we have very small penetration of phones at 6 percent as opposed to a national penetration level of 25. We spoke about television becoming all apps and how the devices we hold in our hands are becoming, like I said, top boxes, and how consumption has become truly everywhere. The history of the cable enterprise from 1971 through to the last project we did, which was a router upgrade, was presented, and this includes an expenditure in total of about $18 million. All of these projects are, to a great extent, complete, with the last entry being the router upgrade, and we are close to finalizing and finishing up on that one. The financial situation for San Bruno Cable was as presented on the slide through about last month, which is average revenue per user of $109, with an expense level of $113, and a net negative margin of 3.7 or close to 4 percent. Our business goals, the budget we had for this financial year was $10.926 million in terms of revenue, with an expense of $11.056. We have to pay back a general fund loan of approximately $14 million. And the ARPU goals, or the average revenue per user goals we had set in place many months ago, was at 95, with a margin goal of about 10 percent. So, it was to go from a negative 3.7 to a positive 10 percent. And we had established a subscriber goal of about 3,000 new subscribers to be added. One of the new goals we have added to this set is to build a cable reserve fund, as suggested by the city manager, which would account for about 5 percent of operational expenses. And we have incorporated this into budgets going forward. What we have accomplished since we presented in November is the following. We have launched a new set of subscriber rates in the marketplace, which include new packages that have at its base the internet offering for both fiber and non-fiber customers, and added to that a package of local TV channels or local broadcast channels, and some select international television programming. We are going to talk more about this in the slides that follow. We have updated our TV guide to the point where we are ready to push out a new look and feel to our 15,000 set-top boxes in our marketplace, and that's due to happen within the next few weeks. As I mentioned before, we've added some select international programming to our basic TV channels, which are provided along with our internet service in one package, and these include Chinese, Filipino, and Korean channels to better address our Asian demographic. We already have Spanish-language programming in this package. We have reduced the cost of telephone service on our system to $7.50 a month from the $29.99 we had in place. We have, as I mentioned before, introduced a new subscriber structure or rate structure. With the router project, we have increased internet capacity, and we have increased the speeds that are available within our system, and also overall reliability. We are proposing to change our mission and therefore our logo going forward in keeping with our request for a technological upgrade and a change in the business operations. And we have accordingly engaged at a preliminary level with a rebranding consultant, and we have also brought onboard a marketing firm that's helping us out with developing marketing campaigns and ways to get our messaging out regarding our new rates, regarding our new direction. And more on this will come forth in a few months' time. The cost controls we have established include the following. We have changed our credit card processing firm, resulting in a savings of 30 percent of the cost. We have renegotiated our phone line rates. We have reduced those by 59 percent. We have new network monitoring systems in place with the vendor with whom we have already had a decade of experience, and that has allowed us to reduce the rates by 52 percent. The net result of all of this is where previously we were losing on average $4.21 per subscriber per month, we are currently down to about 25 cents of loss. And with a few more moves that we have in planning stages, we will be able to make up even that difference. We have Channel 1 upgrades under review, and more on this to follow in a few slides. The crossroads we are at, we have been providing service to the San Bruno community for the past 47 years. We have witnessed over the past few years an explosion in internet usage and growth in our system. We have gone from 1 gig to 11 gigs from 2011 through 18. We need to optimize our system, grow it in a better way to provide even higher levels of access and internet service to what we expect will be increased demand. Over the years, there's been limited investment in installing fiber, and the results have been very good. We have 70 percent penetration levels into those apartment complexes and managed to sustain those even since the time I last reported on those numbers. To perform a better job overall, we need to offer higher internet speeds, better data caps, and better TV and video packages to our customers to attract more of them to stay longer on the system. So, the question we left with at the study session last time around was, should we proceed with the fiber upgrade, to which we attempted to answer yes? The benefits of fiber, as we pointed out the last time around, it future-proof San Bruno Cable. We will be able to offer 1 gigabyte and higher internet speeds. We will be naturally internet-focused with a fiber upgrade because fiber is meant for the transmission of data at very high speeds. And over this internet access orientation, we will be able to offer video and phone services as well. With the TV Guide's new look and feel, our users will have a different experience of the video environment available even as we speak and going forward on fiber for a better Our customers' usage of apps and IPTV will inevitably follow our potential upgrade to fiber if it were to happen, because that has already become the norm in the marketplace today, and it'll only get even more speed and momentum with our conversion. Lastly, one of the benefits of the new business orientation and the fiber upgrade would be that we could curate channels better for our viewers, and going forward, that might actually help to retain and attract subscribers in a better way. We had listed out a few potential streaming partners which would become part of our business mix going forward. While we haven't yet taken any action on adding any of these partners, we do want to consider them as potential content partners going forward, and they include these and many more that keep getting added every passing day. The reason for this is mostly that the viewership for linear television channels has been going down over the years, and the slide continues, even while rates are going up. With the presentation last time around of the material we just went through, we got direction from you to develop a business plan for the future of the cable enterprise and to research and develop financial options to fund the upgrade, should you approve it. This brings us to Part Two, which is Business Strategies and Plan. What we propose doing for San Bruno Cable is to convert it from a cable-TV-focused provider to an ISP, to an Internet Service Provider. It's not that we have not been doing this through the years. We launched our Internet Service Provisioning business in 2002. All we are saying is we want to place this at the heart of what we do. And within this ISP or Internet Service Provider strategy, we want to offer three services, the same three services we offer today, but offered differently. And they would include internet access, on top of which we would offer television and phone. Lastly, we would advocate going with a thick-pipe, thin-pipe hybrid strategy. What we've been doing over the years till this point is a thick-pipe strategy. And what that means is that we have the cable going the last mile, including the last few feet into the subscriber's home, and we have sought to own the entire experience and the relationship with the subscriber. In a hybrid strategy, what we would do is have that aspect in place and as well as a method of co-opting players who are vying for the in-home experience. And these would include anybody from Apple, who has just potentially announced the launch of a streaming service, YouTube TV, all these other people who are vying to occupy center stage within the home on the television screen, and also other app providers, of which there are about 200 in the marketplace right now. It would also include voice assistants that many people have incorporated into their communication and entertainment lifestyles, and it would also allow us to work with several other services that are even as yet making slow inroads into the home, including home security monitoring devices like Nest and so on. So, the essence of this thick-pipe, thin-pipe strategy would be, we would have both 100% last-mile subscriber relationship ownership for our existing and current base, and we would also, going forward, try to co-opt a shared subscriber relationship into our business With an ISP focused at the heart of our enterprise business strategy and additionally offering TV and phone add-on services over the ISP focus, what we would have to have in place to be able to execute properly is a set of complementary strategies within the enterprise that would work together and synergistically operate to give us success in our efforts going forward. And within this, we have a product strategy where we would advocate pushing 1-gig service on fiber if approved, along with the local TV services. And where it's not yet rolled out, we would offer the best available speed, along with the local TV channels included in one package. And that would be at the base tier of offerings. Beyond that, we would have other services such as expanded basic television, such as premium movie channels, even the phone available as add-on services. Hand-in-hand with this, our pricing strategy would include no contracts, which we have had in place for a long, long time. We would continue with that, and we would also seek to have reasonable price points and a one-stop bill. What a one-stop bill means is it kind of goes in hand with having a hybrid strategy of co-opting our service along with other services that are currently trying to attract subscriber attention and gaining traction within the home. So, once we co-opt the service at the backend, we would seek to offer a single bill to that customer, where we would integrate our billing engine with the billing engine of that third-party service. Such arrangements are already in place in the marketplace, and we will try to take advantage of those. Content acquisition. One of the ways in which we can offer these services in a way that makes financial sense to the enterprise going forward would be to curate the content we have in place based on data. What that means is while we don't necessarily want to cut channels that we currently offer, we do want to remove a few services that are currently on the platform but not being used at all. And the only way we can do that is by having a data source that can aggregate viewership data, and we have that in place to be implemented within the next couple of months. A marketing strategy would be extremely essential in a new ISP-focused environment, simply to get informational messaging out to the public about what's available through our new rate structure and through our new packages, and also about the changes that are likely to come should the rollout happen, where we would roll out in phases and have an informational campaign in each phase before, during, and after the rollout to let people know about what's coming to their neighborhood, to their particular home. Technology strategy. What we have had is organic, which has developed or gotten incrementally added to over time, where new forms of transmission of the television signal, such as a transition to high-definition or digital, has happened over time, and we've added those pieces as we've gone along. They have led to a kind of unweirdly environment where we have very different systems and modules in place, all being held together through basically the skill sets of a rather experienced team. And where we would like to go to support all the other strategies that we are proposing right now is to standardize at the backend and to make ourselves more amenable to multicast Internet Protocol streaming, which would allow us to offer IPTV, app-based television going forward, and other services yet to be understood properly by the marketplace, and also move towards a bring-your-own-device kind of environment where our end-users or our subscribers could buy their Roku sticks or other access devices for their homes from the local Best Buy or on Amazon or wherever, and move us out of the business of dealing with reception hardware. The last piece in this would be the operational strategy, and here the orientation is to reduce complaints from subscribers. Most of it is based on a tap, a set of taps and nodes that are electric-powered and that fail on a constant basis. This is what we see as the cause at the backend. At the frontend, the subscriber may see it as something not working at his end, as internet's not working, television signal's not okay, and so on. We want to have, as part of the enterprise business strategy, a plan to replace defective taps very quickly, very rapidly, and in some cases, rather proactively, even before they completely degenerate to the point where they're not working at all. With this kind of a plan, what we would hope to do is to achieve a bunch of no-fault days, or as many no-fault days as we can get, and that would inevitably result in fewer truck rolls. The last piece in this, in the operational strategy, would be to aim for solving problems at the individual level but seeking to broaden them or the solutions out system-wide. So, if somebody has some aspect of noise or something that becomes evident to us in their home, and we fix it, and we come up with a plan to fix it, we would try and roll it out to other parts, other nodes, other parts of a system, such that overall, there would be a resultant decline in the number of complaints received. So, the point of this slide is that it's not simply changing strategy at the top end. We're going to have to do it in each piece of our enterprise and our business, and these pieces have to work together to actually make the enterprise strategy itself work. So, the broad changes that would be delivered by all these strategies working together would be to set us up from our past and current status of being a cable-TV-focused provider into a pivot towards being an internet-focused, an ISP-focused provider with an additional cable-TV service and a phone service through Internet Protocol-oriented provider. Where the market has been so far is that it has... It has high costs in terms of video. The triple-play packages have become rather bloated, and voice and data services are kind of an add-on or an afterthought after the television baseline offering. Where the market's headed towards and what the strategy would help us achieve would be to offer reasonable cost to customers based on a base of internet access provisioning, on top of which we would add video and phone services as à la carte options. The new rate structures we have established have been distilled down to door hangers that we've actually put out into the marketplace and samples of which are available out in the lobby. We have one set of rates for the areas which have fiber rolled out, and another set for the areas where fiber has not been rolled out. The base package in the fiber-rolled-out areas is at $80 and includes 1-gig internet service accompanied by a package of local television channels. This compares favorably with competitors' rates. In areas without fiber, we have the same kind of package offering, but up to 300 Mbps internet service at $65 a month. On top of it, we have Wi-Fi service, which has been growing rather quickly on our system, and that's offered at $8.95 a month. Our new phone price, as I mentioned earlier, is at $7.50 a month and is now available as an à la carte option. We continue offering low-income internet and TV, and we shall continue doing so into the future. We have changed and actually introduced a business rate card for the first time, and the $300 rate you see on the screen there is for 1-gig symmetric internet service, which means 1 gig downstream and 1 gig upstream, along with 2 executive phone lines. And that would be available only in areas rolled out with fiber. For the remaining areas, we have 375 and 100 Mbps downstream services at $150 through to $65 price points. So, the benefits of the strategies that we are putting forth to sort of move us forward into the future include the following. We are ready to offer fiber-based internet access and TV. Our pricing takes care of that aspect and our packaging. We have exclusive services now available for the first time to our business customers. Our residential customers now, for the first time, have a choice to customize their own communications and entertainment bundle. Previously, they were locked into these bigger packages, which limited their ease of maneuver into, you know, signing up for third-party services on their own and building a bundle of their own choice. With the new cost controls and rate cards that we've put in place, we have largely eliminated at this point the losses we were incurring on a per-subscriber basis, and we are positioning ourselves for growth. So, our current situation is that we are now positioned to benefit customers and the business with fiber technology. As part of developing a new mission and a new set of strategies to move us forward, we are in need of a new logo and a new look and feel. And to do that, we have, as I had mentioned before, acquired the services of a branding consultant who has just begun work with us. The processes of branding, it's a multi-stage process, basically coming up with the right ideation, the right narrative, the right mix of look, feel, colors, palette, and so on. And the net result is our new brand that we can use to position ourselves in the marketplace and to identify ourselves as a forward-looking business in this environment. We expect to have a new brand ready for unveiling sometime at the end of third quarter, into the fourth quarter of this year. To get our marketing messaging in place and ready to roll out, should we roll out with fiber, and also ready to take advantage of our new directions with rates, subscriber structures, and packages, we have a sample of marketing collaterals, and we're working with an agency to develop them for our own purposes. And this is an agency that has worked with fiber-related rollouts and companies around the country, and you see a set of samples on the screen. So, these are more samples of mailers, digital messaging for systems that have rolled out with fiber, and this sample look and feel of materials. And this sample look and feel of materials. The fiber rollout plan is the next section. Our physical rollout plan involves a twenty-four-month effort from the time we get the go-ahead from council and financing is put in place. And the plan has been developed at the pole level, involves seven distinct phases which would cover the whole of San Bruno. The actual cost of the project is currently estimated at about ten point seven million, and we have added a contingency of fifteen percent in our request for financing. The rollout plan would involve one project consultant, four temporary technicians, and contractors for whom we would go out to bed. The four technicians that we propose hiring for this project on a temporary basis would report to the project consultant, and their task would be to complete the drops going to each home from the central or from the lines that would run through each street and each part of San Bruno, which would be done by contractors. Our rollout cost is vastly lower than comparable rollouts simply because we have an existing business, we do not need pole permits, and we have an experienced team, and we have cost controls in place. So what we are right now in terms of a fiber rollout orientation is poised for success. In this section, we provided information on our new strategies, our new rate cards, branding, marketing plans, the benefits of the strategies, and the fiber rollout plan itself, as well as the process. In the next section, we will cover a little bit about the highlights of the business plan. We've projected subscriber estimates, expenses, and revenues in three distinct scenarios. Why have three scenarios? The reason is we are asking for twelve point two four million in financing, which would take many years to pay back. And during this multi-year payback or earn-back period, there are any number of variables can come into play and impact the outcome of the plan itself. So accordingly, we've developed a conservative model, a moderate, and an aggressive model for our business plan going forward. So what these models give us is a range. And we have a range of subscriber penetration we can hope to achieve within each of these models. And accordingly, we have a range of revenues we can expect to earn back and also a payback period which would take a certain length of time for each scenario. In the conservative scenario, we have subscriber penetration that ranges from thirty-five to fifty-eight percent. Just to set the context for this, our current penetration is forty-six. So we're actually projecting lower than what we currently have in subscriptions, and we're projecting a timeline of fifteen years in this scenario to pay back the amount we would request in financing. A moderate projection would have us going from forty-one percent, which is again lower than what we currently have, and up to a high of sixty-six percent. And the payback period on this is thirteen years. And finally, our aggressive model would be forty-seven, which is just one percent higher than what we currently have and take about ten, and allow us to pay back the loan to the general fund in ten years. The breakdown and comparison of the revenues. How each part of our business would contribute to revenues is the objective of this slide. And in the fifteen-year period for which we have built business scenarios, starting two thousand nineteen, taking us all the way projected through two thousand and thirty-three, we have the internet contributing forty-four to fifty-six percent of revenues on average, whereas in the past we had the internet contributing thirty-seven. We have video contributing thirty-eight to forty-nine percent of the revenues, whereas in the past we had forty-two percent. And we have telephone contributing between one and five percent, depending on uptake. In the past, we had about four percent. So all this contributes to a projected average revenue per user between one hundred and eleven and one hundred and thirty-nine. Now, this is, this seems to contradict the ninety-five-dollar goal I had put in place, but this range is taken into, has been calculated, taking into account the expenses and the prices we expect to charge as of today. What I expect to happen going forward and which would be a goal for the enterprise would be to reduce costs, keep margins in place, and reduce cost to the customer as well, resulting in a lower ARPU but a retention of the margin. Finally, channel one. We operate a public, educational, and governmental channel, channel one, which streams this meeting, other public meetings, to the citizens of San Bruno and allows some kind of remote participation in the conduct of democracy within the city. And we would like to upgrade this service from its current standard definition format to high definition. The way the channel is currently maintained is through funding accomplished by a dollar fifty cents, one dollar fifty cent tax on every video subscriber. This tax would stay in place. We proposed funding the upgrade itself, which would approximately cost about one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars through savings we hope to achieve through following technology prizes in the fiber-built-out project itself. So there would not be a separate ask for financing of this upgrade. What we hope to achieve is, given the nature of technology and how, as time passes, different components of the fiber technology project could be expected to cost lower than they're currently forecast at, we hope to accomplish the funding of this piece, the channel one upgrade, through that method. So in summary, in part three, what we covered was the business plan scenarios that has been presented in detail as part of the business plan document itself, projected subscribers, revenues, and expenses, some points on these aspects, and the channel one upgrade. What we are requesting in this meeting from the council is approval on the business plan itself, the Cable Enterprise Business Plan. And should it be approved, we would seek to then present financial options to fund the upgrade to fiber at a later date. Brings me to the end of my presentation. I welcome any comments, questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation, the information, and the detail that you put before us and with the Cable Department's support. When I just start again, it is not required for council to take action and make a decision. However, this is opportunity for questions, so I'll start down with this end, Marty, and then we'll just work our way through. Questions for staff?
Sure. First of all, thank you very much. Clearly, you've been a very busy and efficient person in lowering the costs of our operations and putting this all together. It's been a long time coming. I had a couple of questions from residents about why is the internet bundled with TV? If people just want the internet and they want no TV...
Yeah, it's an excellent question. The reason we did that was to give people the option to have access to basic TV without having to buy a separate package. The way we have positioned it is it's entirely optional to the subscriber to decide to activate the video part of their package or not. If the residents of San Bruno were to compare the cost of our package with what's available through other providers such as AT&amp;T and others, they will find that we are generally, for gigabit service, we are about ten dollars lower, even including television. So it's actually a very good deal. And it is targeted towards those who primarily have already subscribed to a streaming service of some kind, some video on demand or some streaming service. And for those people, potentially the need to have a television subscription or access to other than local channels does not quite exist. So it's meant for a new type of subscriber, a new type of consumption of media. And like I said earlier, our subscribers don't need to actually activate the part or acquire a set-top box to stream those channels from us. The cost is still very competitive, even if they don't.
I hear that, but for somebody that says, "I don't want the TV at all, lower my price."
We have an internet, a hundred Mbps internet offering at forty dollars a month.
Okay.
It's in place.
So it's an option?
There is an option.
If you don't want TV, even at all the different rate cards for the gig speed, it says, you know, local channels included.
Yeah.
But if they wanted to get out of having the TV at all, they could, they could...
Well, the way it's positioned right now is for forty dollars a month, they would get hundred Mbps internet access, no TV. For eighty dollars a month, provided they lived in a fiber-built-out area, they would get the one gigabit internet access, and then it would be at their option to choose TV or not.
Okay, all right. Just, I don't watch much TV, but just, I received a question because people are talking about this new rate plan, and I think it's a little surprising that some people are like, "Well, they didn't know about it. They found out a certain way." But the rollout of the information you covered in the presentation, so that should be coming pretty soon?
Yes, within the next, in a general system-level format, within the next month and a half to two months. But to be more specific, the rates that are specific to fiber-built areas would be rolled out in conjunction with the fiber rollout itself, should it be approved.
For the current changes in our rates, how is that being rolled out?
At the current time, we have, at the most basic level, door hangers prepared. But as I also covered in my presentation, we have a rebranding effort underway. So we don't want to go whole hog and print out a lot of materials and do a lot of...
I think it's great. I think it's clear that the prices are definitely competitive, and it's the level of service that our customers will be receiving through us instead of dealing with AT&amp;T, which we've heard some horrendous stories. As part of that rebranding, I just wanted to make sure that the images are reflective of our diverse community. They were pretty vanilla. That's, thank you very much. Because we have everything here.
Yes.
And of course, it's going to be in different languages, I would just presume.
We haven't talked through, I mean, depending on the branding consultant to come back to us with ideas. We have just had a very basic engagement session. And what we expect to see is a series of ideation presentations, and which will be brought to city management's attention at the appropriate time and potentially to the city council when it's at its final stages.
I'm going to have, this next question is about the seven different areas that are identified. In the presentation, it was hard for me to find out or to determine which of those seven on the figure with the map are related to the spreadsheet. Because do you, you know, follow what I'm saying? It's hard for me to tell what...
You want me to go back? Yeah, go back to it. I think there are two parts to that. One is you are trying to link the various areas with the cost on the spreadsheet. We can give you that information. What you don't see up there is phasing one, two, three, or four, and that is purposeful because we are still in the early stages. And we have to decide what the phases are based on various factors. And we didn't want to get into, "Oh, I'm phase three. Why am I not phase four and phase five?" There's so many decisions that go into that. We want it to kind of keep at high level and talk on the balcony about the business plan and the benefits to the community.
Then that's going to come at, after the financing plan?
The phases?
Yeah, that, I mean, I know what people are going to be asking right now. It's like, "Well, when am I going to get fiber? Am I, you know, are you going to go to West?" And I, and just curious to kind of, at some point, we're going to have that discussion. And we don't need to have it now. I get it, but that's, people are going to be asking that really, really soon, as soon as they hear if we're going to be moving forward with this.
Right. So, I mean, once we get the contractor on board and we figure all that out, we will roll, we will absolutely roll that out and provide that information. It's just a little too early right now.
Got it, got it. I think that's it for now, because I've been talking too long, and I'll let the other colleagues...
Thank you.
You know, one of the things we haven't done very well, and I'm just so happy to see this, is really looking at what we're selling currently. Who are our customers? What's the data that we're capturing? So we don't currently kind of have types of metrics where we know what programs viewers are watching, what, you know, we've seen the decline in viewership. And I think the other big piece is that reliability is an important piece. And, you know, for me to say, "I've got poor internet at home, but he's got good internet," might be two different things because of the speed that I'm getting. So I guess, first question is, what kind of metrics are we capturing? And it sounds like we're going to be doing a lot more going forward. Number two is, how do we turn that perception that the viewer has in terms of the quality of what we're providing?
Okay, one of the points I mentioned earlier was that we have a bunch of defective taps or taps that are going bad as part of the existing system. And these taps are devices that are required, they're electric-powered. They're required as part of the hybrid fiber coax structure that we have in place. Once we go to fiber, these taps go away. And what happens because of that is almost immediately an improvement in the level of service or reliability of the overall system to the end-user. In the meanwhile, even while we are planning to do that, what we have in place is a plan to replace defective taps fairly quickly. And we have been doing it for a few months now. But it's kind of chasing after, you know, a set of problems that keep showing up in different locations. You saw the one here, there's one there that goes bad, and we have several hundred of these taps in, or actually a couple of thousand of these taps in place. So we have a plan. We are, we are trying to replace taps as quickly as possible, soon as they go bad, to maintain the level of service. What we have noticed is in areas where taps have gone bad, we've replaced it, and customers have been complaining about poor service, we notice an almost immediate improvement, you know, increase in speech to one hundred and fifty Mbps and beyond.
That's great.
Yeah, so it's a slow process, not perfect, but we're trying to get ahead of the curve a little bit and replace as quickly as possible.
And then tell me a little bit more about the complexes where we have installed fiber. You indicated that there was seventy percent, seventy-six percent...
Seven zero.
Seven zero, seven zero percent. So are we seeing a continued incline? Are we getting a drop-off in any? Are we...
No, we're not seeing a drop-off. We see three or four, a movement of plus three, plus four on a month-to-month basis. And this we attribute more to move-ins, move-outs because there are several hundred apartments in each of these complexes. What we notice is that out of the seventy percent penetration, we, well, there is a seventy percent overall penetration. Internet penetration is sixty percent, and TV penetration is about forty percent. So it's considerably more internet-oriented as opposed to TV. TV-only is very, very small.
Okay. And then, you know, I love the idea of, we've got to better strategize. I mean, we offer an excellent service here in San Bruno for San Bruno Cable. And if we can improve the technology, the reliability of the product, and no contracts, you've got a business in town, I've got a problem, I walk into a business, I'm not on hold for two hours or an hour trying to reach somebody. I have an appointment to somebody to come out and check. I've got somebody that shows up. We don't promote that business very well, and we have it in the past in terms of how lucky. There are so many other providers that are out there, and you mentioned some of those names earlier in your presentation, where you can talk to a number of people who will tell you that their experience with them have been very poor. They don't show up when they're supposed to show up. When you go to call somebody, you're really not sure who you're calling, where you're getting. "Oh, yeah, they're going to be out there," and you continue to wait. You can wait all day long and they won't show up. And San Bruno Cable does not have that experience. You know, anybody I've talked to that has a technician come into their home will tell you that we provide excellent service. you that we provide excellent service. And that our cable, in fact, I had a resident recently, just, I wanted, who do I talk to about the great service, that this person was so patient and so kind? But that's the kind of information we need to be able to get out there and share. Because it is about price, it is about the reliability, but it's also about that great customer service we get, that we don't seem to do very well. So, I'd like to see more about how we can promote that as well. And the final thing I want to comment upon is, how I understand that from a resident standpoint, right? Family of three, family of four, what's it gonna cost me? What's the big package, right? I want to have a DVR in every single room, I want to have TVs in every single room. What's that big, that cost? And how does that compare? I'd like to see some comparisons with other, other, what is AT&amp;T charging? What is DirecTV, or DirecTV Comcast, et cetera? I'd like to see some comparisons with those other vendors as well.
Okay. But at a macro level, as of today, AT&amp;T increased all their streaming packages' prices by $10 per package. And we have moved in the opposite direction.
That's a good comeback.
Excellent.
Irene?
I was gonna say that, yeah, that is a great comeback, and we should promote that more, and, and let people know. I agree with Laura and Marty that we have a fabulous service crew, and they come for anything. If you're, if, if, you know, if you're, I've, I know people that, they try to get the thing, they don't think about changing the battery on their remote. A cable guy will come out, and they'll go through everything, they'll go, and then they'll change the battery on their remote, and it works, and it's like, "Oh yay!" And then they leave, and that's, that's a fabulous thing for a lot of people that have no tech knowledge at all. So, I, I agree with Laura that we need to make sure people know that we do that. And maybe, maybe interviewing some of the people and putting it on channel, our new Channel One, or however we want to do it. So, and before I give the mic up, I want to also thank you and your crew for doing all this. I know it was a tremendous amount of work, and you did it in record time. I know Al and Bob have been working on this before, but now it's all gelled together, and it gives us a complete picture of before, now, of possibilities. I think that, that was it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Michael, to the IT man.
To the chair, thank you. So, first of all, great, great plan, great presentation. I was very excited to see a lot of the things that are coming. I wanted to ask about the rebranding. It wasn't mentioned specifically, but I'm wondering, is the name gonna change? Are we gonna drop the cable thing? Will San Bruno still be part of the, that brand? Or are we looking at doing something different?
I think cable will definitely drop. That's for sure. Anything else?
It's up for grabs.
A large amount of input is required from various parties, including city management, city manager, all of you.
I think we want to keep San Bruno on the title. I think cable is not where the market is moving, and so, but, I mean, we've all had ideas, but we're really looking forward to the consultant to give us some really good branding ideas, both logo and title. And less about what we call it, but more kind of what we look like, a new, fresh approach.
Okay. So, okay, so it's interesting. I was, I was curious of whether we wanted to really maintain that community thing, or really go more with industry things, where we're competing with things like Xfinity and Uverse, and Sonic, you know, things that sound techie. And do we want to stay homey, or do we want to be techie? Where do we fit in that? So I'm just, just throwing that out there. In terms of the timing, the marketing campaign, the rebranding, is that gonna happen prior to the fiber rollout, in conjunction with the fiber rollout, or post-fiber rollout?
I think it's gonna happen on parallel tracks. The fiber rollout is a physical rollout. We get an okay, we actually buy the fiber, we actually string it out on, with contractors' help, and project consultant, and what have you, out in the field. The re, the branding exercise is again, physical, but it's more, it's changing the, the direction, or setting the, the image of the enterprise, keeping its aspirations in mind. Now, that aspiration is a moving target. We, it's gonna start moving in the direction of fiber soon as the rollout is triggered. So I would say, it'll move on its track, on the one hand, in terms of rebranding, and then you'll have the physical rollout. So as each phase of the rollout happens, first of all, at the system level, we would have rebranding being done at the macro level, so to speak, for the 15,000 homes we have. And then, as each physical rollout stage is completed, we would actually have a door-to-door grassroots campaign, where we would have materials that are specific to each home being distributed, and with the new logo and with the new...
Okay. And in terms of, of the rollout plan, we're, we're talking about going to every home, whether or not there's subscribers?
We are talking about passing every home, whether or not there's subscribers. We will do a drop to the house only when they subscribe.
Okay.
Only then would there be a reason for us to set up an appointment with that homeowner.
And how does the cost vary versus doing a neighborhood versus doing an individual home? So, say, you know, as, as we add more people later on, does, is that cost per home dramatically different versus getting people all on board ahead of time and doing the entire block at once?
Getting everybody on board at the start, when we are simply, so to speak, fibering the whole city, it would be enormously expensive for us, because each home would add about $850.
Once the system is built, I mean, get new subscribers.
Thank you. Once the system is fully built, and we will cover every home, so there will be a hot tap out on the pole. So, if a customer calls up within an hour and a half, we'd have internet in their house. Once we pass everybody, get, convert everybody over, now we're looking, hopefully, to grow several thousand new customers over the several years. That will cost roughly about $350 to $550, depending on what services they take, what kind of boxes they need in their house. If they just want internet, it's, with the labor and the fiber box, it's about $350 bucks.
Okay. And I imagine, right now, we probably have coax going to pretty much every home. So, turning them up is pretty much costless, but that wouldn't be the case going forward.
You know, we, the coax is no longer gonna be used, the drop coax.
No, right. I'm just saying, so if, if we get a new subscriber today on coax, it doesn't, it hardly costs anything to turn that subscriber up, versus if we add a new, a new subscriber in the post-fiber world, there's gonna be a few hundred dollars worth of cost. And I think we've agreed that we don't want to go down a subs, or a contract base where we try to recoup some of that by locking somebody in into a contract, so that we have that ability to recoup some of that. So, that's why I was, I was asking, you know, what the cost would be per, per home as we roll them out. So, I don't know if that's something that's being accounted for in, in the pricing and the long-term strategy? Have you thought about that?
Yes. I, I mean, to switch over all 5,000 customers that are left out in the field, that's all cost in that 10-5.
Okay.
That's, that's in the budget there. But any new customers after that, and in that 10-5, I figured about 10% extra growth to cover, you know, as we go, because people are gonna hopefully say, "Yeah, hook me up while we're out there." So, I, I did cover an extra 10%, extra 700 or more homes in that cost. If we go above that, then it's gonna cost us about $350 bucks, but that's, that's a good, that's a good problem.
Right, right. Okay.
Another perspective on this is, we currently have about 7,500 unique subscribers on our system. So that leaves about another 8,000 that we don't have.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the part you're asking about, which is, okay, how are we planning to cover those guys? And when they come on, we have added a new revenue stream essentially from each home. And plus, we have, to Al's point, accounted for a certain percentage to be covered in our current existing budget. So it's a combination of these two aspects.
Okay, okay. And, and as we roll out the fiber, are we gonna recover the old cable and pull those off the poles, or are those gonna be abandoned in place? How does that know what will happen?
We're gonna pull them off. We're gonna pull it off. But the initial process of fibering, or laying the fiber, is called overhashing. So we actually lay the fiber on top of the existing HFC plant that exists on the poles. But eventually, that HFC has to be pulled out, otherwise, we'll be increasing the load on the poles.
Right.
Yeah.
I was a concern. Okay, thank you for that. Regarding the, the phone strategy, have we seen, after the, the price decrease, I'm not sure when that happened, but have we seen any net gains because of that price change?
Very small number. Most people don't know about it. And so far, all the phone subscribers we've had at the old rates have been in packages, so they won't even notice the difference. It's, it's only the new subscribers who would come on once we start marketing it, where we expect to see some numbers and some growth. We've had about 50 people coming onto the new rate card, and the phone subscribers are less than 10%.
And, and that, the, at the new rate, are we recovering our costs for the, the backend system?
Absolutely. In terms of the new contract we have signed with our wholesale provider, who incidentally is the same provider we have had for the last 10 years. So they're tried and trusted. And we were paying them $12, we are currently going to be paying them $5 per line per month. And we are positioning the product at $7.50, so we make $2.50 here.
Okay.
To defray our costs.
Great. And is that gonna be basically something that we offer because we have to, or do we want, are we looking at significantly increasing that, our penetrations?
We are looking at significantly increasing from a very different perspective. One of the things that Chief Cresta mentioned to me was the ability to do a reverse 911. And we would like to go for that kind of a goal over time. Even though, sorry to say, we can't offer the product free of cost, we have to pay for it at some level. But we hope a low enough price will attract enough users where we can create a viable alternative to having a reverse 911 call on perhaps this kind of a phone line.
Okay. And the last thing I wanted to ask about was, in, in terms of some of the, the backend stuff that we're doing, are there any plans in conjunction with, with these other upgrades to say, like, upgrade our email system, which seems a little, a little kludgy to me? And the website maybe could use a, a refresh as well?
The website could use quite a big refresh. But what we want to have, and again, is some kind of a strategy for that. One, we, per direction from city manager, we would like to keep the look and feel common across all the city units, enterprises, and departments. But within our website itself, what we would like to have is a point-of-access account management system, which would come into play once we launch apps, where people could go in and change their settings, and add channels, and delete channels, and things of that sort, and improve their service levels or reduce it. That is quite a big project, and we, I would not like for us to embark on that right at this stage, where we have several pieces of the system in movement. And if we, we would like to do that more deliberately, maybe halfway through the fiber build, where we have enough of a base, and enough of a new base, to create momentum for adoption of this kind of a change in our website.
Okay. And then the email system, any discussion on that?
The email system, yes, we've had a bit of discussion. What we've discovered is that the usage of San Bruno cable emails is pretty low. And it's low across emails provided by any provider, Comcast and others included, because most people have gravitated to third-party email services such as Gmail, or Yahoo, or what have you. So with that, we're not as focused on generating more traffic for a new email offering as we are in preserving what we already have in place for our existing subscribers. So it's more a storage issue for us than it is a new email generation issue.
Okay. So we're hosting those, the email servers in-house?
Absolutely.
Okay.
No, we don't host them in-house. We host them through our, it's Zicorum, right?
Zicorum.
Yeah, through our Network Operations Center provider. And they provide this as part of the service.
Okay. Now, that's interesting to know, that that's not a, a growth area. I thought email was still a pretty common communication tool, which is...
Email is common. It's just that...
Gmail.
Yeah, Gmail and more third-party platforms are in use, and hardly anyone uses these anymore.
Interesting. Okay. And then finally, just in terms of notifications, I got the email that there's gonna be maintenance on, on the, on the system that, this, tonight?
Yeah, this morning at 2:00.
This morning at 2:00?
Most people probably won't even notice it, we're hoping they're beginning to break up with the area. I think that'll...
Sandy, if you can, come to the mic and repeat, and then we'll... In regards to the council member's question on update and work on the system.
Yeah, the, the update tonight is working on the router replacement that we got going on. It's between 2:00 and 5:00 o'clock this morning, and we don't expect anything to happen, but we did send out an email just in case something did happen. Gives us time to get it back up and running. And they're aware that we are already working on it.
Okay. So, so in this case, those of us that do use San Bruno Cable email got the notification. I don't know that other people saw that, so...
No. We have everybody's email, so everybody who has our internet got a copy of it, I believe.
Okay. So whatever email we use when we sign up for service?
Yes.
I happen to use my San Bruno Cable one, okay. But it would be nice if there was some alternative way of, whether it's social media, or something on the, on the, on the homepage, that kind of, not only for this planned outage, but when there's an unplanned outage. You know, I, last time our internet went out at home, I spent half an hour on the phone waiting for somebody to pick up, just to tell me, "Oh yeah, it's, it's a system-wide thing, don't worry about it, it'll, it'll come back when it comes back." You know, I, I could have gotten on my phone and checked the website and found out, you know, that, that there was an outage, and it wasn't just me.
That's definitely something we need to work on. Notifications of outages in some electronic format.
Yeah, just, as a take on that, we will be adding the cable department to SB Responds. And as we get people trained up in our community to use that app more, that they can go to that app to find out information about cable outages, like they do for our other utilities as well. And so that is a feature that we'll be adding in.
Okay. Great. Yeah, you know, definitely, as we, as we promote this, and it becomes more of a staple in what, how we, how we do business, and how we manage our lives, you know, it, it becomes that, that much more critical. And I just want to make sure that we're, we're planning accordingly, so that we can make sure that we're, we're serving the public adequately. So, thank you.
So I want to turn it to you, and ask you if there's any direction or that you need from us, that we may not have through our questions or the hour, that maybe you didn't walk away with saying, "I think I know what we're thinking. I know we're talking about fiber." So, I want to be clear for the community, is, and then for each other. This is not, tonight's meeting is not, "Yes, we're doing fiber, and here's how we're funding it." So I don't want expectations to be raised in that, that column. Because when we started talking about, well, who's phase one and two, it's like, we're not even there yet. However, but I want to make sure that between the manager and yourself, that you've gotten enough feedback from the council that you're good, or you need additional.
Yeah, what we were looking for tonight was acceptance of the plan and the long-term vision. And so, a vote from, from council would be sufficient for that, and then we would come back with the financing plan for the Fiber to the Home project.
So, I don't, I don't, we don't need a formal vote, but I mean, you're looking for consensus and direction, or you want a formal vote? We receive presentations of the business plan. I don't see where it says action. So, why don't we go down the line?
Consensus is fine.
Let's see, let's see where we, we land. How's that?
Do you have a public comment?
Chris?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, um, I have a couple of questions, and I, I...
Please, thank you. Yeah.
First of all, last time, we were addressing cable, and we were talking to this gentleman behind us, we were talking about Beverly Hills, right? And we're the same as Beverly Hills. Last time I checked, we're not on the top 10 of the richest cities in the nation. We're, we're not. We're San Bruno. So we're not the same as Beverly Hills, correct? B, we keep talking about if, maybe, projections, there's no guarantees... B, we keep talking about if, maybe, projections, there's no guarantees in all this stuff. When you're looking at $10 to $14 million, and you're, you're, you're behind the wheel as it is, we have to really think business smart about the direction and which way we're going, because when you're talking about millions and millions of dollars, 14 million, and you're still 10 years, 12 years, 14 years out with no profit coming in, where do you draw the line and say, business smart? What's the best for business is the taxpayer. The people who live in San Bruno, that's what's the best for business. So, you really gotta think about this, take two steps back, exhausted, and look at the big picture as business. I, I look at it all the time. I go, well, if I'm the bank, you're gonna come to me, I wanna say, well, when are you gonna pay this off, what kind of interest, and what are you looking at? What's your goals? Profit, 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 it, it, it's the ultimate decision-maker. I'm not knocking anybody, but we have a short window where we are as a city of San Bruno. We don't have a ton of money coming in. You know, we got Firehouse to build, huge, that's a good idea, but it, it, it's hard to iron out and have guarantees, where, you know, we have no guarantees. Alls I hear is ifs, maybes, we already have fiber optics here, competition's good, you can't knock one versus the other, but, you know, I'm here for four hours, and I'm hearing, like, I don't hear guarantees, I don't hear business smart, I'm hearing ideas, and, you know, ifs and different ideas, but it's also good to look at the other side. You gotta, you gotta look at both sides of the story, always look at both sides.
And thank you for sticking around and offering your comments. Does staff want to have any comment? If you don't, it's fine, I was just...
I'll make, I'll make a comment, and that is, you know, as a council, we came to a decision some months back, to look at San Bruno cable that we have today, and do we go down the same path that we've been going down, where we haven't been successful, we haven't been looking at everything we do? And, and as Sandeep has stated, you know, look at phones, and you look at contracts we've been able to negotiate to, to improve our cost. I think we have a gem in San Bruno, I think we have something that no other city has, and we have an opportunity to make it better and to provide the best possible service that's out there. I myself, as a San Bruno resident, very frustrated working with any other vendor that's been out there, because all I've been is frustrated, and I can tell you, a number of people I've talked to that dealt with either Comcast or an AT&amp;T, very frustrating working with these companies. They don't have the customer service that we can provide, and so, we have this opportunity, we have this, this gem in San Bruno, and the question is, do we spend the money to invest in it, or do we jump ship? Because we can't continue down the road that we're going. And I think we've heard tonight is that we've got a really good opportunity and a good business sense, and somebody to lead us to the next phase and be very successful. I think we've seen, this is not the first presentation, this is several presentations now, that we've seen really, a really good business plan and a strategy, and I, I think we can talk more with you, Chris, but I think that, I'm excited for the direction that this is going, I'm excited for the opportunity for San Bruno, I'm excited for the opportunity for residents of San Bruno to get a quality package at a very competitive rate. So, thank you.
And I would say, since Steph doesn't have anything to add, I would, I would think that, out of fairness too, when we go back in time to the cable department, what if you go back into the history, what its establishment was for, was to help offset costs within the community. But what it has done for a decade or more, is I'd say $1. something million would go from the cable department to the general fund, which is profit, right or wrong, because it's an enterprise fund, and so, really, it should've been stayed and reinvested within that department, so that when we did have an upgrade, when David Thomas was here as a Cable TV director, that whole system, when I was on city staff in Parks and Rec, but I mean, we were a part of watching it, was that it was completely redone, completely paid for in reserves. So, that we have not done, because those monies have come to the general fund, we have brought those down over the years, so it went from a million to this, to this, to this, I think it's up to 300, 400,000 off the top of my head at this hour, and so, it has been making profit to sustain the enterprise fund in addition to giving money to the general fund, and so, now we're trying to reinvest that in that. So, I just want to say, so profitable, yes, but then again, had we invested that back into, like you, you would your home, or you would a business, then I see that we would've had reserves, and we would've had opportunity. And I think this council, and again, in the several or eight months that we have had new team, some new team members, have brought something forward that has been, since my time working in this city in some capacity in the early 80s, I have seen an evolution, and I've seen us where it was, where it kind of went, and I see us trying to either get to that question of, no one's approving tonight to spend the money, no one's saying fiber will be happening, but it is a matter of, they've come back as directed before to say, will we move forward, or do we want to say enough? And I think that's kind of where we're at to see for direction, just the staff, but as a perspective. Anything else from council?
I...
Please, Mark.
Because you, you did hang out, and I know it's late.
A long time.
And it's worthwhile. So, we've been, we've been kicking the tires on this project for a while. In the staff report that's available to the public, it's a lot more detailed than, than this presentation, it goes through item by item of each component to build the system, it goes through each of those four zones, and gives a cost for each of those. So, yes, there's risk, of course, but, but this, this is...
That's just what I'm, want to hear, I want to hear a whole...
It, it, you know what? I'm sure I'll be willing to take my staff report and, and show you, and this is, we're not even there yet, we're, we're just figuring out this first other step, then we gotta figure out what, what this is gonna cost, how we're gonna pay for it, that's gonna affect everything, so it's a deliberate, but very important, and, and it's a vision for where the city will be in the future, and it's not gonna be with, with anything other than fiber, or you're gonna get out of the business. That's what we were told, either you, you, you fiber up, or you get out, and, and we're reaching that point.
Looking for it, looking for it, just to hear more.
Okay, well, you know what, they should be here sitting down too.
No, but, but, Chris, you wait a long time, so thank you.
I got one question, I got one question about it.
Two.
On the internet, I mean, an email question.
Okay.
So, thank you for attending.
Anything else from council, or, and let's, let's go back to the question that was asked about, which was posed by the city manager, as far as what is the council's desire, to give direction to staff? So, is it yes on this business plan? Is that the question, city manager? Marty?
Aye.
Aye.
It's not a motion, but you could just, I, I was good too.
Well, I want to be clear, the business plan includes doing fiber, so that, and unless I'm wrong, the business plan is all about, if we're going forward, we're doing fiber, and then the next piece is, how do we finance that?
Correct.
So, it's not a, we're, it's a, my understanding is, we're giving them a firm direction, go with fiber. Am I wrong?
I would, okay, so let's get clarity, there is not an official vote tonight, nor a funding source, but the business plan does clearly define and outline the fiber and how it would be done, and potentially rolled out with finding finances and stuff, so is that the direction that this council still wants to direct staff to continue on? Is that correct?
Right. What was requested of staff, or what was envisioned, was acceptance of the business plan, and the business plan does have a fiber backbone.
Right.
Technically, council is not authorizing the Fiber to the Home project, because we need to come back with the financing options, and those agreements, and those resolutions. This is saying, staff has, has developed a business plan as directed, and the city council accepts that document in the, the global vision for the enterprise, which does include the fiber project.
Right. So, so I just want all of us to be clear, that, that that's the direction, that we are saying go...
It's in their report that they've given us in three parts, and if we're giving staff the consensus to move forward with the business plan, that's what's included, so they should not be thinking they're spinning their wheels for no reason, I would think.
Exactly. So, yes, I think we should go forward, I think it's just what Laura said, it's a fight, a fabulous opportunity, and it's either like fish or cut bait, you know, we do it, or we don't do it, and I definitely think we should do it. We've, you know, we kind of invented this whole thing, San Bruno is one of the first small cities to do this, relatively small cities to do this, we've kept it up, we've rebuilt it, we've rebuilt it again, we've upgraded it, we've added services, and I think it's an exciting thing to keep going, and as Laura said, it's a joy.
Take that as a yes?
Yes, it's a yes. Well, I wanted to make a speech.
That's okay, you're entitled. Michael?
That's a great plan, let's move forward.
Yeah, and I just don't want expectations, I guess the only reason I'm being clear is I don't want calls, so when does it start? It's not starting today or tomorrow, there's not a funding mechanism, as even Mr. Bo just was saying, where's the risk, how are you paying for this, how are we gonna balance it? Those are things that all have to come back to make sure that we're all in sync, but I just don't want expectations to be in the community that we just approved fiber to all the homes, and it starts later this year. I, I just want it for the record, but I think you have a, my, what I've just heard tonight is you have a 5-0 for the business plan, thank you for the effort, thank you for the work, and thank you for bringing that back forward to us in a very short time.
Thank you for the opportunity.